We'll start without her. Here she is. Sounds fine to me right now, Chris. All right, I'd like to welcome everybody to the special meeting of March fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen, or two thousand and sixteen, I'm looking at the clock, twenty twenty-one, and it is six thirty-one, if we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic.
For which it stands.
One nation.
One nation. Under God. With justice. Just scroll.
Thank you. I'd like to start with just a general opening statement tonight. In light of all the changes in guidance through the state and the country, we wanted to be sure that you all knew that the school has been actively working on ways to return more in-person learning days for months now. These meetings have been held pretty regularly with the administration team, and they have spent hours talking about different ways to return to school before the changes took place in Onadoga County and other places. We need to remember, however, that it wasn't too long ago that school went from, the school went from taking time with the health department to talk about prioritizing the different zone designations and mass testing. We understand that there are many other schools that are doing different things. However, we need to be aware that no school has the same circumstances. Each school has a unique set of resources, building capacity, and staffing. There are also many different variables, and our school has been spending time on a regular basis working through these variables. As we look back on this school year, I hope the administrators, faculty, and staff understand how proud we are that our school has made this hybrid plan work and deliver a safe way of learning to this point, and that we've only missed two days of instruction due to extreme caution. Many schools can't say this. The board and administration are happy that tonight we can discuss the next phase and we, and what it will look like. Please feel free to enter comments at any time in the chat function. However, I would say that if you wait to type your question in, you might find that through the presentation and our discussion, your questions could be answered. We will allow ample time at the end for questions and for people to type in their questions. And with that, I turn this over to Bill for a presentation to the board and then our discussion. Bill?
Thank you, Michelle. Before I start with my roadmap reopening, I just want to thank our families, parents, guardians for their patience, their understanding. We completely understand this has been very difficult, and I want to thank you for your patience, your flexibility. I want to thank our administrative team. They have put in countless hours, not only putting together a reopening plan and our task force teams in the summer, but to get us to this point so we can present a reopening roadmap for the next phase. Excuse me, our faculty and staff has been outstanding. They've been flexible. They've been supportive. They've, they've worked so hard to provide a quality, safe instructional model to this point, and their, their willingness to be flexible and change on the fly. And as you said, it wasn't too long ago that we were having conversations with the Department of Health about zone designations and, you know, the administrative team was visiting Colgate and looking at their mass testing protocols because we were concerned that we were going to have to move into that phase. So things changed really rapidly. The guidance, there's a lot of confusion around the guidance and what that means and where we are. But we're in a place now where we feel that we can provide this roadmap to reopening for you. So I'm going to present my screen and then talk through, and then we'll have a conversation as a board and administrative team. And then we'll open it up to our community members to ask questions, and we'll do our best to, to answer your questions as, you know, the best we can at this time. So let me just share my screen with you, and we'll get moving here. Okay, does everybody have that?
Yes.
So here we are. Here's our roadmap reopening. I want to introduce our administrative team. Obviously, you know, I'm William Dawson, Superintendent of Schools. We have Mr. Matt Crum, who is our business manager, Mr. Mark Arquette, who has our middle school, high school principal, Ms. Heather Thomas, who is our interim elementary principal, Mr. Kevin Ellis, who is our Director of Pupil Personnel, and Mr. Chris Rogers, who is our Director of Technology. All of them will be sharing input tonight on our reopening roadmap. Here's the timeline I'd like to propose to you. So Monday, April twelfth, the Monday we return from break, we would like to open K through twelve. We'd like to reopen for four days of in-person learning per week. That'd be Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. Wednesday, we would stay dedicated to servicing our fully remote learners. We have a pretty high percentage of families and students who choose to be fully remote. We'll still offer that, and we have an obligation legally to continue to provide an educational model to those students. So we have determined that Wednesday would be the best day to continue to provide servicing our fully remote learners. Our pre-K would remain AM, PM, four days a week. We are asking for a commitment from our parents and students to either be in person or virtual for the remaining last ten weeks of school. The hybrid model will no longer be offered if the board agrees to this, this roadmap. If agreed upon, we will be sending out a parent, parent survey tomorrow, March sixteenth, to determine whether you're going to make a commitment to both, to either in-person or fully remote participation. And we're going to ask for a deadline for intent would be Wednesday, March twenty-third. Because those numbers will determine and dictate cohorting, the moving of furniture, the spacing, the number of barriers that we would have to put in each room. So there's a lot of logistical changes that will be determined on that commitment to either be in-person or fully remote. And again, we're asking for that commitment for the ten weeks. We can't have families and students moving from in-person to virtual, weekly, daily. It just can't happen logistically. If this is approved, we're looking at Wednesday, March thirty-first, which is typically our virtual day, to be an asynchronous virtual day. And then Thursday, April first, which is typically an in-person day, to be an asynchronous virtual day as well. So those two days leading up to break would give our, our faculty and staff the opportunity to come into school, to finalize rooms, to finalize preparations. So then we have spring break, and then we can welcome students on Monday, April twelfth. So that's our timeline for implementation of reopening. A lot of people are asking, why now? Why bring students back now? You only have ten weeks. You know, our hybrid model seems to be working. The time is now. If we are to do this, there's no better time than now. The social, emotional, and academic impact on our students is, is increasing. Kids are really struggling. Some kids, some families are really struggling. The academic impact of only being in front of their teachers two days a week as opposed to four days a week is a huge difference. The impact on families with childcare, the remote learning support that they're having to provide at home, the financial implications of some families having to take off of work to be home with their students, and the emotional toll that this has taken on all of our families and students. We just feel like this is the best time now to bring students back. Also, the risk benefit analysis. There's data in medical experts who support that transmission of COVID nineteen in schools is minimal. According to the Madison County Department of Health, after collection data or collecting data for the past six months, they've confirmed that there's only been one case of in-school transmission in all of Madison County schools. So when you look at that risk benefit analysis, the risk is far less than the reward of bringing students back for in-person instruction. The seven-day infection rate for Madison County is currently at point six percent, and the expectations are that this should continue to improve with some variants. You know, there's going to be days that it goes a little higher. There's going to be days a little lower, but there's a leveling, and there's a, there's a trend, a downward trend. There's a lot of research out right now that supports three foot, three feet of distancing as safe and effective with masks and barriers. And I'm really happy to say by April twelfth, the Monday that we would welcome students back, ninety percent of our faculty and staff will be fully vaccinated at that time. So that's a huge risk factor that is being taken away with the vaccinations. And then the natural transition with the start of the fourth quarter on April twelfth. Also, why now? We, we surveyed our families. We had three hundred and ninety responses, which is about seventy percent of our students, and we asked some targeted questions. Three feet with desk barriers. Would you be comfortable sending your child to school for in-person learning? Ninety-point-three percent of our respondents said yes, they would be comfortable sending their student back with desk barriers. Only nine-point-seven percent said they would be uncomfortable with that. And in real numbers, let me just find my chart here. Chris, do you have the real numbers on that chart? Well, I have it. Sorry, I have it right here. Three hundred and eighty-two students would be in favor, and then thirty-eight would be uncomfortable sending their kids, their children back. Second question was three feet without desk barriers. Would you be comfortable sending your child to school for in-person learning? Eighty-two percent, eighty-two-point-eight percent said yes, seventeen-point-two percent said they would be uncomfortable with that. So that's about three hundred and forty-nine students that would be comfortable, seventy-one students who would be uncomfortable. So clearly, the data and the response is that families are comfortable sending their children back to school, either with or without barriers. We also surveyed our faculty and staff, and the question was very targeted. Would you be comfortable having more students in person four days a week with reduced social distancing? Eighty-two-point-two percent said yes, seventeen-point-eight percent said they would still be uncomfortable. We also wanted to get an idea on transportation because this will determine the transportation guidance has not changed. So we wanted to have some data on what that would mean as far as busing, pickup and drop-off, what that would look like in our bus circle as far as congestion and traffic. So the question was if restrictions are reduced and the number of riding each bus increased, would you utilize district transportation? Sixty-two-point-three percent said they do not use district transportation. Thirty-one percent said they would be comfortable using district transportation, and six-point-seven said they would not be comfortable utilizing district transportation. So we're going to have to, we're going to send another survey out if we move forward with this plan. Obviously, the restrictions have not been reduced to this, at this time. So we need to get a, a better feel for who is going to be utilizing district transportation, who is going to be dropping their kids off because we're going to have to look at the congestion in our bus circles with pickup and drop-off and try to manage that as best we can. The New York State Department of Health guidance, and here's where a lot of confusion has come in. You know, with districts, with school attorneys, with departments of health, with NICED. Can you bring students back in less than six feet of, of social distancing with or without barriers? It's very clear from this statement from the legal counsel for the New York State Department of Health. You can reduce social distancing. However, you have to have barriers in place. I checked with our legal counsel today. They reiterated, the facts are, you can reduce social distancing, but you must have barriers. Again, mandatory, ensure that social distancing of at least six feet or a physical barrier is maintained between individuals while in school facilities and on school grounds. If social distancing is not possible, individuals must wear acceptable face coverings, excluding students who are unable to medically tolerate face covering. We are still going to mandate face coverings. Part of our success with our model to this point has been the good work of our students, the support from our families and the support from our faculty and staff on keeping masks appropriately placed on covering nose and mouth at, at all times unless we have a mask break or unless they're eating. So we are going to continue with that mandate. That's part of our reopening plan. It's part of what it was in September. That will continue with masking. Some information and challenges that we are looking at. Barriers, as I said, are mandated. If we're going to bring students back less than six feet, we have to have barriers. A huge thank you to J.S. Hope, who was a Senior Vice President for Finance and Administration and the Chief Investment Officer at Colgate. Colgate has agreed to cover the costs of our barriers. We've ordered five hundred barriers. They are expected to be delivered this week, completely covered financially by Colgate. So that, that is a huge financial burden taken off the district and which will hopefully allow us to reopen and bring kids back.
Thank you to Colgate for that.
Absolutely. Lot of talk about ventilation of the building, transportation, cafeteria, as far as breakfast and lunch and cleaning. I'm going to turn it over to Matt Crum, who is our business official, who can share some information on those four areas with you. So Matt?
Thank you, Bill. Good evening, everyone. With, with regard to these, these four specifics, really with, with focus on some of the non-instructional components of school operations and with a focus on health and safety. In our parental survey in the comment section, we did have some questions regarding ventilation. We, we are fortunate in this recent building project, really pre-COVID, and with no intent of trying to address anything COVID-related. We were able to increase the ventilation throughout our building. We worked with our, we were in contact with our engineers and architects who worked on this recent project. And we have air turned over in all of our instructional spaces at least twelve times per hour, and four of those times are done with fresh outside air. So in any of our instructional spaces, you're never more than fifteen minutes from air being circulated, fresh outdoor air being circulated. If there's anybody that has additional information requests regarding that, I would ask you to please reach out to us at the district office, and we'll, we'll make sure we get answers to that and perhaps even put you in touch with somebody who can tell you a lot more than, than I can. So obviously, too, with warmer temperatures coming, we will certainly be able to open up and naturally ventilate the building through open windows without jeopardizing any building safety concerns. So furthermore, with buildings and grounds, I'm going to kind of jump down to cleaning. We have, we will not be able to clean in the building as we currently are. Under our current schedule and based on our current capacity and the number of students that are coming every day, we are currently cleaning and disinfecting anytime we have a change in cohort within the building. Our schedule currently allows for that. That is not something that we'll be able to continue to do specifically in the middle school and high school under this new model. The good news in the secondary, by having kids in the, in the building all day, we shouldn't have as much, you know, kids are going to have their own desks. So it's not going to be, when a kid comes in and sits at their spot on a Tuesday, it'll be the same spot they were in the day before. So we're not going to have a change in cohorting in the elementary school like we've had. We will be doing thorough cleaning at the end of the day like we normally would, and then we would still have Wednesdays to utilize some of the newer equipment we have, the electrostatic cleaners that we can address larger spaces and really do more of a deep clean as needed. So there definitely will be a change in cleaning procedures, but I think we're comfortable in that things are different now than they were in August as far as what we knew in terms of transmission. And there was still a lot of unknowns back in August about, you know, aerosols versus surface contact. So a lot has changed there, but we certainly will have to make some adjustments with cleaning. With regard to transportation, we really don't expect much to change. We started the year with three regular in-district bus runs. We added a fourth when we started to see people come back from fully remote to the hybrid model. We do have the ability to add a fifth run. We may have to make some minor changes, but it's going to depend on how many people are utilizing district transportation. We will try to put, we can put students from the same household closer than we can students that don't live together. So that's factored in. We're going to try to do what we can to not shift the, the routing around and pickup times around. One of the things that we consider both in August and, and again now, and really throughout the year is staggered dismissal time or looping of bus runs. And unfortunately, it's not an option for us. We have students that attend programs outside of the district, and our buses and drivers are needed throughout the day. So we wouldn't be able to dismiss earlier than usual because we have buses that are out on the road transporting students to and from other programs. So I know that's something that's been, been brought up before, but unfortunately for us, because of transportation, a staggered dismissal and arrival is not an option. And then lastly, cafeteria and food service. With regard to distancing and, and safety, there's probably not going to be much of a change because we will do with, with kids, obviously eating, they won't have masks on. So we'll attempt to keep kids six feet apart whenever possible during breakfast and lunchtime. Again, this is going to depend on the number of students that come back and how students are cohorted. Currently, with breakfast, our cafeteria staff is preparing, packaging, and delivering breakfast to all the classroom elementary kids on a daily basis. That, for example, won't, won't continue under this model because, because of the increase in population and the increase in output that they have to prepare. So we may be looking at a return to more of a serving of, of lunch at the cafeteria and then utilizing larger spaces like the cafeteria, potentially part of the gym, or larger classrooms that'll be designated for, for food consumption, both at lunch and, and breakfast. But again, with transportation, with cafeteria, much of that is going to depend very specifically on the number of students that, that do commit to coming back four days a week for in-person and how we're able to cohort them. So you know, just as I sort of step away here and turn it back to Bill, I also want to thank our team and our faculty and staff in the building and also recognize what the families have been through. You know, it's been a long road, and I, I'm excited about this. I think, you know, we can make it happen. So thanks, Bill.
Thank you, Matt. So continuing with our information and some of our challenges, as I mentioned earlier, we have approximately fifteen percent of our student population at this time are completely virtual learners. And based on if we move forward with this model and what the survey results bring back as far as the number of students who stay virtual, fully virtual, there's going to be some adjustments in both the, the secondary schedule and the elementary schedule. So I'm going to ask Mark Arquette, our middle school, high school principal, and Heather Thomas, our interim elementary principal, to share what that's going to look like preliminarily and just kind of talk through that model. So Mark, if you would, please?
Yeah, thank you. So when the middle school and high school students that are fully remote, they will currently, so our current schedule is they are meeting with their even classes one day, odd classes the next day. Everybody meets with all their classes on Wednesday, and then they're in-person two days. A fully remote student, what that looks like is they are meeting the odd and even classes and the Wednesdays, just like everybody else, whether you're hybrid or fully remote, everybody is doing the same thing those three days. The difference is the days in which in-person students are in the building, a fully remote student will be live streaming into all of their classes following the bell schedule for those two days when the other students are in person. So a shift that's going to occur if we return back to four days would be if a student is fully remote, they would be streaming into all of their classes, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. So, you know, all of the students in the secondary, I've had a little experience with, with the synchronous learning piece. This transition, though, would be those fully remote students, instead of going odd or even, they would go to all of their classes on the days that normally they would have odd or even classes. Wednesdays, we'd still like to have time built into the schedule for team meetings. What in, when this all started, we found that team meetings were very valuable for the, for the teachers to talk about students and find ways to reach the students and to, to problem solve and recognize different areas that may need work with students and to be able to support our students. So we'd still like that for Wednesdays. We may be shifting a little bit into more of an office hours approach for Wednesday so that students could be spending a little bit more time with their teachers of a particular subject. And we want teachers to be able to also continue with the individual synchronous lessons that they're having with students that are either fully remote or, or even in-person students that may be struggling. A lot of teachers have set up just blocks of time throughout the day so they can meet with those students individually. It's also a really important time for individual outreach. So one thing that has happened a lot during this pandemic is a substantial increase in the amount of communication required from the teachers out to the families to, to try to help students to make sure that everybody's on track, everybody is on the same page, and we're, we're increasing the success of those students. So it's really important that we have that time for that outreach as well. As far as the individual classes, they're going to shift a little bit because we wouldn't have satellite rooms. So a teacher, when they're teaching, will have more students in front of them, sometimes can make the handling of both those individuals online and the people in front of you a little bit more difficult. But it's something that we've been doing all year long, so I'm confident we can make that adjustment and, and still provide for those students that are fully remote. Anywhere any questions?
Pulled off on questions right now, Mark, and let's, let's transition to Heather with the elementary, please.
So for virtual learners, we have been able to devote one teacher at each grade level two days a week in the hybrid model to virtual learning, and that will change with this new model. So as we shift to four days, all teachers at all grade levels will have in-person students. And the, the good news is that the virtual learners, as I've met individually with every grade level, pre-K through five, the virtual learners will be able to stay with the teacher that they've been assigned to. So we have had an increase of students move from the hybrid, or I'm sorry, from the remote to the hybrid model. And so that has reduced the numbers of fully remote students, and we are able to navigate that so that those virtual learners can stay with their classroom teacher. So what the changes that will occur in this four-day-a-week model will be that there will most probably be more synchronous learning so that the fully remote students will be live streaming into the class for the ELA lesson, for the math lesson, science, social studies. So at some grade levels, they've already been doing that. At other grade levels, they haven't. So that may be a shift depending on how the, the teacher is going to reorganize their schedule. There will probably be schedule changes for those virtual learners. So they have had some tailored schedules on the days that their fully remote teacher has been able to put together Put together a schedule for them that may that may shift as well. Wednesdays may be used for the remote teacher to meet with the virtual learners in small groups or individually. So that would be a day that that may increase that individual instruction for students. And I think that I think that about covers it. So Bill, do you want me to go into talking a little bit about the elementary cohorts?
Yes, please.
Okay, so. The cohorting, because we have had those teachers that have been devoted to the fully remote learners. Will have to be somewhat balanced out. And I've met again individually with pre K through five and we've looked at each individual grade level to see how many completely remote students there are. How what the sizes of the classroom is and how many students can be housed in each classroom. And so at every single grade level, there is a different plan for how those classes will have to be balanced out. So it will. It will range from, there will be no no teacher changes at a grade level. To there may be up to seven students that will have to change teachers per grade level. So the plan for that is that will be an internal decision about class rosters. And the schedule again may change in varying degrees depending on how. The teacher has, if the teacher has been a remote teacher in the past or has been a hybrid teacher. I think that about covers it.
Thank you, Heather. Kevin, will you share some of the challenges from a PPS standpoint or what this model will will mean from a from a PPS and delivery of special ed services?
Yeah, sure. So there's not a ton of changes in special education and related services like OTPT speech counseling. A lot of the services are already taking place four days a week. Our special class students are here four days a week. So they'll continue to get four days a week instruction. Some of our non-special class students will now have the four days a week, obviously. So there'll be some scheduling changes that we'll have to do to make sure each student is accommodated. I think the most, probably the most difficult part for us is going to be. And really for Heather and Mark as well too, is it's like starting over. It's like having the school year begin again. And that the schedules, many of the schedules will have to be reconfigured. So that all of our special education students, related services, our RTI services such as reading and math. Those services are maps. And then one of the biggest challenges that I'll have as well is is the aides and the TAs that work in the building, they're assigned to specific classes and students. So, you know, some students were here one day and some students were here another day. Now they're here together. So we really have to completely do the aide and TA schedule as well. It doesn't sound like a lot, but. It's definitely a challenge to make sure every student's needs are met. Our CSE meetings are going to continue virtually. I'm going to put a survey out as well, but all the feedback I've gotten back so far on our CSE meetings is that the the parents that are participating love it. You know, they don't have to leave work. They can step out of the office and come to the meeting. If they're home, they can, you know, do that from home if they're small children. They don't have to necessarily get a sitter. So we've been finding that we've we've had more participation virtually than when we actually have the in-person CSE meeting. So we'll continue with those. For the remainder of the year in the virtual model. So that's, that's, that's about it. I'm sure we'll come across more challenges as we as we dive into the plan and really look closer at everything.
Great. Thank you, Kevin, Mark and Heather. Some other challenges that we're going to have to to work through our our facility space. Each classroom, depending on the number of students who come back, the number of students. In each cohort will be the configuration or setup of each individual classroom. Some classrooms have desks, some have tables, those may have to be interchanged and some classrooms may have desk sand tables. Some of the classrooms may not need barriers. They may be able to maintain six feet of social distancing with masks on. And some classrooms may need barriers. Some classrooms may need three barriers, five barriers. It's so dependent on the physical space and the number of students coming back. As far as the configuration of our facilities. And then as Matt alluded to, you know, lunch and. Breakfast and lunch are going to be a real challenge figuring that out logistically, but that's something that that we can do. Pickup and drop off. Obviously, the more students, the greater congestion. My plea to families is just continue to be patient. We're going to have twice the number of students. We're going to have to be real patient and I would ask that when you pull into the circle, continue to go as far as you can towards the. The exit by the playground. Please do not stop at and drop off where the buses are going. We're going to keep the buses where they are now. We need to really be patient and and move forward with with pickup and drop off within the circle because it's going to be very congested. Another challenge that I want to be really transparent about. Contact tracing exposure. If we have a positive with increased population density in the class and doubling the population in the building. Could increase the number of students and staff requiring to quarantine in the event of a positive case. That's the reality of bringing more people back. And unfortunately, if we do have a positive case, that could mean more in quarantine. Depending on exposure and depending on the contact tracing investigation. So. I just want to be real clear with that and put that out there. That's one of our, one of our challenges. You know, there are some schools that have brought everybody back. Neighboring schools and they've lost up to 50 days of in-person learning. Because of contact tracing and the number of students and staff that have had to be put into quarantine. So. That's a possibility that I just, I want to be real clear with. As the weather gets nicer, obviously, when Mr. Crum talked about ventilation, if we can, we'll open the windows. Use our outdoor space as much as weather permits. And try to get airflow into the building even greater than it is now. We're in a really good place with our ventilation system and our filtering system right now and. But you know, if we can open doors and get people outside as the weather permits, that's a real bonus for us. Want to show you some pictures. So you have a comparative analysis of what this is going to look like if we move forward here. So this is a six foot classroom. These are desks spaced six feet apart. So this is what it looks like currently with desks. Tables, again, very similar. And this is what it will look like with three feet and a barrier. As you can see, it's much closer. And our normal setup, if we were under normal conditions and if you walked into one of our classrooms. You would see the picture on the left, our desks would be back to back. However, we would have more space between the aisles. So three feet is really less than our normal. Under normal circumstances. So, you know, if we can space out greater than three feet, we will. And this is a picture of the barrier. A student using a barrier from different angles. So six feet. Three feet. And the last thing in my presentation is just some of the research that has been shared. I will share this with anybody who who wants it. We'll put this presentation on our website. So you can research and refer to some of the, some of the articles that have been guiding us through.
Bill, thank you very much and.
Welcome.
To the entire team for the time you put into this, you've put into the planning over the last several months as. As you have been on your weekly meetings and such. To the teachers again and the staff who are going with the changes along with everybody else. And we really, really appreciate the time and effort they're putting in. Now what we're going to do is open it up for the board to discuss and ask questions. Then we will open it up to the public that is watching. And so hopefully. A lot of the questions have been answered already. But I will turn it over to see what's what the board has to say from here. Don't jump in at once. Travis. I'm going to start picking on people. There we go.
All right. Hi, everyone. First off, thank you, Bill and your team, all the teachers and staff for all their hard work on this plan and throughout the year. I understand all the frustration of everyone to get to this point. We've all been frustrated. We're all in the same boat, so it's not going to do me any good to start poking holes in it. I like this plan. Most of my questions I had coming into the meeting have already been answered. So. Obviously, as you said, there's going to be challenges and I get that. But I'm very hopeful and thankful for the plan you've put forward and. I'm happy with it. I'm ready to move forward.
Thank you, Travis.
Corey.
You know, this echo everything Travis said. First, I don't think there can be enough thanks for all the work that you've put into it, all the work the teachers are doing, all the work they. That we've, we're putting on their plate with this plan as well. Two quick questions I have is, one, do you have enough enough human power to get the things done to move desks around? Do you need volunteers from the community? That could come in and do some of that stuff at night. And then the second is just if you could just generally talk about how. Faculty staff are feeling about this plan.
So I'll start with. The manpower. It's going to take a lot of work and. There's going to, you know, as soon as we can start moving forward and start. Planning and the survey results are going to be the big determinant because that'll determine how much needs to be moved into each classroom, the number of students coming back. The logistical. Nightmare of some of these changes that we're going to have to work through. So. But we will work through it and we will reach out if needed for sure. You know, we want to limit outside. Coming inside is obviously for exposure. So if we can handle it internally, we will. And that's the direction I would like to go. But if we're in a pinch and we really need some help, obviously, we'll reach out. As far as faculty and staff feeling. It's a lot of work. We're starting over again and they're not afraid of hard work, but you know, typically at this time of the year. You're you're working on scheduling for next year. You're working on getting ready for Regents exams. You're getting. You're working on getting ready for state assessment and. All of that is going to have to be put on hold for a bit, you know, or worked on simultaneously. So. It's a bit overwhelming. But everybody wants kids back in the building. I mean, that is what we are here for. That's our goal. We know that in-person learning. Far exceeds remote learning. But we also are respectful and want to be cognizant of families' choices. And if you're comfortable continuing with fully remote. Obviously, we're going to do that. So we have an obligation in both directions. But it's a lot. It's a lot. And the challenges are challenging. You know, logistically. You're, you're, you're taking a model that we put forth in August and September. And now putting forth another complete school model now. So it's a lot, but we we're confident that we can do it and we can do it safely and we're ready to do it.
Jen, anything from you?
First of all, I just want to echo as well. Thank you so much to everyone for all the time and attention that has been put into this. I just have one question. It's primarily for middle school and high school. And I know like at the collegiate level in regards to cleaning, they have like even Clorox wipes or something. For the kids to wipe down the desks themselves in between. Is that something that we would? Would be able to be offered just so that there is a little bit of cleaning on those surfaces?
Currently, the students aren't allowed to use the chemicals. They shouldn't be using any of the cleaning supplies that we have. But there are a lot of teachers that will clean in between periods. Anyways, so that will mostly continue. When, when a class isn't back to back and there's time in between. If a teacher has planning, I'm sure that we can still touch areas up, you know, during that time as well. So those pieces can continue and all the rooms do have cleaning supplies in them.
Okay, great. And then the only thing I had, if you are looking for any external manpower, I'm more than willing to to come and. Pull some weight.
Thanks, Jen.
Ellen.
Um, so again, like everybody said, thank you to everybody, families. Staff, teachers, administration, everything, you know, the thing I keep thinking is that everybody's tired, like. Everybody's tired. Families are tired, kids are tired, you guys are all tired and you've done an amazing job. Of pulling together a plan that I think is really going to work. I know. For me, the big question has been all along, is this safe? And I think this this group knows. The group on the screen knows that I have belabored this to a point that is probably pathologic. But. But in the end, I do think it's safe. I mean, I think we have the data now to say that this is safe and. And that makes me feel better from that perspective. That doesn't make it easy. It doesn't mean it's going to be without hiccups or quarantines or any of that. And I think. You know, I think that's the one piece that that also needs to be clear is that nothing is ever no risk. We're working to minimize risk with with everything that that's happening. Every, every little piece. Is a little piece that helps to minimize risk and we can never make the risk zero. And I think, you know. Most people know that, but I also think it needs to be said and and. I'm very comfortable with the plan, the way it's laid out. I think, I think it's great. I think you guys have done a great job. I guess my questions, question to start is. Are there any pieces outstanding yet that you are worried? Could be the piece that would keep this from happening? Is there anything that you have not yet figured out that you've, that has the potential? To be the piece that prevents this from happening?
Not at this time. I think, you know. Again, when we get the results of the survey. That'll determine a lot. I think we're confident that we can work through things. Lunch is going to be a huge challenge. Challenge, breakfast and lunch because right now it's being delivered. And they just don't have the capacity to do that with doubling the capacity of our student population. So. Logistically, that is going to be a huge challenge for us that we're going to have to work through. You know, because we may have to stagger lunch periods, you know, we may have to stagger the elementary times. There's so many variables around breakfast and lunch that. Quite honestly, we haven't worked through yet that we're going to have to work through. You know, the cleaning, the the transportation. The delivery, I'm of educational, so I'm confident that we can work through all of that and I'm confident we can do it safely. It's just, it's going to take some time and I'm just asking for patience and flexibility. Because as you said, there's going to be hiccups, you know, and quite honestly, if we have a positive case and we have to pivot quickly to fully virtual. You know, we may have to do that. I certainly hope not, but that's a reality. As you said, the risk is not being, it's not a zero risk situation. You know, there could be an exposure. And when you have double the population, it could mean greater amount and we may lose some in-person days because of that. You know, and we've been very fortunate to this point where, you know, we've only lost two days and they were precautionary. They weren't mandated. And some districts who have had everybody back, as I said, have lost up to 50 days of in-person. So, you know, I, I just want to be very upfront and honest about that, that that's, that could be a real possibility. Plan, our hybrid plan was built on that, that you could flex back and forth very quickly with that.
And just a couple other comments, really more than questions is that. I still, I think the precautions that are in place while there may be more quarantines does not mean that there is, that there would be an expectation of increased in-school spread. The whole point of the barriers and the masks is and all of these other pieces. The whole point of the barriers and the masks is, and all of these other pieces, is, is to decrease the risk of in-school spread, so even though there may be more quarantining, I don't feel like we're setting up a lot more people to get sick. And that's huge, I mean, that was a huge part of the safety piece for me, was, was needing to see that. I'll, I'll say, for me, from my perspective, lunch and breakfast are my biggest concerns because it's masks off. I honestly think masks are our biggest friend in this whole situation, more than barriers, more than anything else, it's, it's the masks. And so, so that's the time, I think it's absolutely critical to do as much as we can to keep them six feet apart, and you know that, I'm not telling anything you don't know. And, and I think just other comments in general, one is that also an understanding of the community that we may have to flex back, not even because of a positive that leads to quarantines, but if community transmission starts to spike, there is a chance that either by state mandate or for safety reasons, we may need to flex back to decreasing that distance, you know, that safety data is there, but the data also shows that transmission in schools is proportionate to transmission in the community, and so that's just, again, I, I think it's fair for everybody to have that in mind that, that, that may come to pass either of our own choosing or somebody else's. And all of those other pieces, and then the other thing I would just sort of ask of everybody is grace. Grace for each other, grace for the hiccups, grace for the stumbles, and grace for the poor person who has to make the phone call and tell however many people they have to quarantine. Nobody likes making that phone call. Hopefully, we never have to do it, but.
Let's hope.
Yeah, I think that's all I, I don't think I really had any other questions.
Michelle, can I jump in with one more question?
Sure.
Bill, just to clarify, if every student and family decides they wanna come back to in-person, this plan will still work, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I, I echo my, my four co-board members, however you say that, I echo them, I think this plan will work for our school, I think you guys have put a lot of thought and effort into it. The presentation was wonderful, I could tell that you guys all really spent time to be prepared for tonight. And the only thing that I would change frankly is the timeline of when these surveys need to be back, so right now you have them Wednesday, you know, sorry, let me read the right thing, so the survey will be distributed on Tuesday, March 16th, which is tomorrow. And when do you want those answers back, Bill?
The 23rd.
See, I think that's, I think that's too much time, frankly, you guys need more time planning and there's no reason that if, if parents get a survey tomorrow, that they can't get them back by the 19th.
And we, I, I don't mean to interrupt, we talked about that from an administrative team, but we wanted to be cognizant, this is a big decision for families and, you know, as far as daycare, as far as, you know, are you really comfortable? So we wanted to give some time to really have a thoughtful response, because we are asking for a 10-week commitment.
I understand that, and maybe, maybe just as early as the 22nd, but that would still get you through the weekend, but that would get you guys the data you need by the end of the day on the 22nd and a day more to get things moving. There's a lot of pieces, a lot of pieces that you guys need to put together. And I think people have already been thinking about this, and if they haven't, I'm surprised, to be honest, because there's a lot of talk in the community about it and, and the news and everything. I just, I, I say that with caution for you, I, I want you guys to have the time that you need to get prepared. You don't get the data back till the 23rd, that's Tuesday, it's the end of the day, you read it on 24th, now you're into the Thursday, Friday, and you have to make moves the following Wednesday, that, that's quick.
Yeah.
So trying to give you extra time is, was my only concern, if you think the 23rd works for you, then all the power to you guys on that and that's fine, but I, I, that was the only piece of the presentation that I would like to adjust, if any, so.
Am I wrong that even if, even if you leave the survey open till that date, doesn't mean that you won't be able to get data? Cause like if the majority of people fill out that survey tomorrow, you give you a lot of good data that you can use right away.
Absolutely.
It leaves some time for those people, you know, it seems like, I think you're right, Michelle, that most people already have been thinking about this and have a good idea. So it seems like it still gives some time for those people who are still on the fence or have lots of other, you know, other complicating factors that they need to work out sometime. But for those people like me, I could, I could answer right now. I could ask my kids, they might have a different answer, but.
They might not get the choice, right? No, and generally speaking, I think that, I think you guys have done a good job this entire year and that this plan helps us continue to do a good job as we move into the fourth quarter, through the fourth quarter.
Yeah, and, and I, I appreciate that, Michelle, you know, obviously, the quicker we can get responses back and have real numbers from a logistical standpoint, that will help us, but again, you know, we just, we talked about being cognizant of the decision that families have to make and Kevin, I'm gonna call on you just one more time if you would, because I know this was a question that came up a number of times. How are we going to support kids coming back, you know, all of a sudden they're back in school four days a week as opposed to two days a week? You know, what are the sports that are gonna be in place, so if you could talk a little bit to that, if you would, before we move on?
Yeah, sure, so we, we have a really, really good team between our counselors or among our counselors and our school psychologists. We also have two behavioral specialists that have been working with us this year, they have been instrumental this year with our, we, we have had some students that have come back in person and have been dealing with stress. With that team, they've done a really good job of pushing in the classrooms, working with the teachers, observing, putting together behavioral support, some plans, modifying instruction, really helping those students that are stressed out and and really need that extra support, so. You know, they, they've already been doing a good job and are set to continue to, to work even harder when we have everyone back at once. Yeah, one of the things that we, our team did talk about was to put a survey out to students and families just to get a feel for what, what students might need some support coming back full-time. But they've done a great job.
Thank you.
So I think, if I'm not pushing people too fast, I, I think we do have.
I have one more question too after Cory.
I know that we had, that you, it makes sense that we want people to commit to their choice for the next 10 weeks. Would it be reasonable though to leave, for those who opt into in-person, a one-time, not a back and forth, but we've been doing it for two weeks, it's not working, we have to go virtual. You know, and opt out, not, not that they could opt out for a week, but you know, you can, if it's, you're trying it, it's not working, you don't feel good, you can go fully remote for the rest of the, of the, of the year, is that a reasonable thing that could happen under this plan?
Let us talk about that administratively, you know, because logistically, we want to, I, I think it's reasonable. And what we wanted to avoid was the flexing in and out transitions, you know, I'm in one day, I'm out the next day, and that's been difficult, we've had some families that have done that, and from a delivery of instruction, from a logistical standpoint, that makes it difficult, you know, I think if there's extenuating circumstances, then we would consider the transition from in-person to fully remote. It's the other, you know, moving from virtual, fully virtual to in-person that we want to avoid because of capacity and configuration and cohorting, obviously all the logistical things that would come into play, so. Yeah, let us talk about that.
I wanna mention at an elementary level that could result in a student having a completely different teacher at that point in time. So they may have one teacher in person and have been with that teacher if they go remote. We still are gonna have all of the fully remote students with, with one teacher, so they would then also, you know, or potentially could have to change teachers too, under that model.
My question is actually going back to Michelle's question with her timeline, so obviously you're gonna need 100% participation with the survey. So what is the administration's plan for following up? And that's where I get a little nervous with that timeline as well, because if you get them back the 23rd and then you're spending the next couple of days following up, again, I'm just really concerned about administration's timeline as well, so just wondering what that plan is, or is someone gonna start calling them maybe Monday, even though the deadline isn't until the 23rd?
Yeah, we'll have to follow up with phone calls, obviously the survey that we just talked about tonight, we didn't have 100% participation, so there still are some families that have not responded, so and with 100% participation, we are gonna have to do some, some solicitation on the phone to find out exactly what that's going to look like. Chris, I don't know if there's anything else you wanna add from that standpoint, from a survey standpoint?
No, I think you said it, I mean, it's essential that we have 100% participation, this is a process that we've gone through before. When we put out the, the initial survey way back when this whole thing started, asking people who needed devices and who needed deliveries of things, lunches and whatnot, you know, there were a certain percentage of families that we needed to reach out to beyond the survey, so we've got experience in doing that.
Thank you Chris.
So can I jump in real quick and just say that in regards to the timeline, I think you have to give parents and families at least the weekend to talk this over, that's just my take.
At this time, we do have some questions, I'm, I'm not saying the board has to be done with their questions, you can still ponder, but if, Chris, if you could read the few questions that we have, so we can answer those. And that will give the board a couple more minutes to ponder anything else that we need to. I'll turn it back to you for that.
Okay, so the first one, I think, Bill, you may have already answered. If a classroom is able to maintain six feet distancing between students due to small class sizes, would such a classroom now require barriers or not?
They would not, as long as we can maintain six feet of distancing, we would not require barriers.
Right. We have one that I think Ms. Thomas might be able to answer. Will kindergarten students be moving to four full days of in-person learning or will they remain half-days?
At this point in time, they will actually shift to four full days. The way we have it planned right now.
Bill, I think this one might be for you, being as experienced as you are with state guidelines. What happened? Okay. Would, would face, is everybody still seeing, hear me okay? Okay.
Yes, and online's still good too.
Good. Would face shield, will vaccinated teachers be required to quarantine following an exposure?
If they're two weeks out, they do not have to quarantine.
Two weeks out from their second dose.
Correct, fully vaccinated, or the first dose of Johnson &amp; Johnson.
Okay. Would face shields be more economical and/or effective than barriers for desks?
That's the great debate right now. Face shields are permissible, we're waiting for guidance from the Department of Health, Madison County Department of Health. I wanna caution against face shields though. Think about a, you know, our young learners wearing a face shield all day and a mask all day as opposed to a barrier. They fog up, they're fidgety. They're just, it's a different learning experience, wearing a face shield all day as opposed to just a mask. You know, the barriers are a different experience altogether and I'm, I'm not real comfortable with face shields right now as, as a replacement for a barrier.
The next one's a comment, not a question, thanks to everyone, great presentation. This one's probably for Bill. If we move forward with reopening the school, might we be able to consider having some form of modified sports for the spring, at least the outdoor sports?
I, I think that'll be a discussion for a later time, right now, I'm concerned about getting kids back in the building four days a week for instruction. And then we'll deal with spring sports when that time comes. You know, obviously, we'd love to offer experiences for all of our students, whether it's sports, maskers, extracurriculars, that is the plan, that we would like to do that. But those are gonna come in phases, so, you know, we'll have that conversation after we take care of getting kids back in four days a week for instruction.
Next is a comment for Michelle agreeing with the survey timeline and that most survey responses come within 48 hours delivery of the survey. We've got another one that maybe Ms. Thomas could answer, or Mr. Crum, I don't know who could answer this one, but how many elementary classrooms do you anticipate would need the barriers?
I, I don't think we're gonna have any idea until we get survey responses, that, that would be my answer, Heather, you can probably expand on that.
So actually, I just spoke with our pre-K teacher this afternoon and the way that program is, that classroom would not, because that's going to stay the same, but I would anticipate most, almost all of the other classrooms will have the barriers.
Thank you, Chris, for going through the comments. For anybody that's watching, there are a lot of you and we're very thankful for your time being on with us tonight. If you do have other comments, we're gonna leave the comment space open for a little bit and continue discussing here if the board has anything else to discuss. And we wanna make sure that there's ample time while I'm rambling for people to type in and ask any other questions that they have. I do, I, I wonder if the board has anything else at this time that you want to ask questions about, that you need any of the administrators for, before we move on from here.
Yeah, face shields, would they be clever solutions for the problems we will face with hallway congestion and the buses?
Right now, we're looking at, and Mark, jump in if you want, staggering release times from the classrooms, so we don't have everybody in the hallway at once. As far as busing, I don't think we're gonna have to use face shields on the bus, depending on the number of people who are electing to be transported. Right now, our masking is working and I, I don't anticipate that we'll have to go to face shields. We certainly have an inventory of face shields if we need them, and if we need, you know, we make the decision that we're gonna utilize them in some capacity, we have an inventory to use.
And obviously, if a student or a staff member wishes to use a face shield, they're welcome to, correct?
Yes.
Out, lunches, would outdoor lunches on nice days be a possibility?
Yes.
That's all I got, thank you guys.
Mark, were you gonna add anything or you're good?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, in September, we originally had a plan of, there are three minutes in between each period. And, and we originally thought we would need to release students of one group of students and then a minute and a half later, release the other group of students. As the year progressed, we found that there wasn't the congestion that we originally thought there would be. We, we haven't been doing that, but with both middle school and high school in the building, we can go back to trying that and seeing if, if that can help with that issue.
We've got another question that came in, this one could be answered probably by either of the principals or Mr. Ellis. Are there any plans in place to address learning deficits?
So I, my team, in particular my related service providers, but my special education teachers as well, are already addressing that currently, so they're, they're, they are monitoring, progress monitoring their students as they work with them. And if they're noticing that any students are, have regressed. And if they're noticing that any students are, have regressed or showing significant regression, um, a program review should be called. Um, and um, you know, modifications can be made to the IP with, with the whole committee um, in agreement. So for special education, RTI students, uh, students that are struggling, yes, that, that, that's currently taking place right now and will continue to take place when students come back fully.
Can just add on to that, that uh, Mark and I are going to be talking about summer school, the potential of offering um, a summer program as well to take a look at that.
And BOCES will offer their summer school this year as well.
And I believe BOCES has already come out and said they'll offer both a, a, a remote and an in-person summer school. Um, so parents will have that choice.
Another one here, um, this one's probably for the principals. Uh, once we've shifted back to four day in-person, what is the plan to support learners who may have to be temporarily remote because they're in quarantine at home because of exposure outside of school?
So in the secondary, we, if they're healthy enough, they could follow the same model of uh, streaming live into their courses and keeping up with the coursework that way. Um, you know, physical materials, we would have to talk about logistics of that, but you know, we could probably still get some physical materials out to students if they're quarantining for, you know, 10 days or whatever it is.
And then um, I would add in the elementary, it will um, be different if their teacher currently has other remote students. Um, then maybe the potential plan if the teacher has all of um, his or her students in person. So we'd have to look at that on a case by case basis.
I think everybody, oh, go ahead.
Sorry. Um, do you know if there has been any conversation from BOCES on possibly going um, to more in-person days? Or do you know if they plan on just continuing with the model that they've had for the remainder of the school year?
I, I don't know what their internal discussions are at this point. Um, I, I do know that every district and every BOCES is looking at opportunities to get more kids back in front of their teachers for in-person learning. But I don't know what their thinking is as far as, you know, transitioning to a different model at this time.
Thank you.
Bill, I know the question will eventually come at some point. Is there a pathway to five days a week in-person this school year?
No.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. We would stay in, in four days. Um, you know, because we still have to service our fully remote learners. Um, and we have 10 weeks of school left. We're going to, you know, i- if, if the board, you know, supports this model, this is the model we'll deliver for the next 10 weeks. And then we'll shift gears and prepare for what the fall is going to look like, because honestly, we don't know what that's going to look like at this time either. So um, it would be, it would be this model moving forward for the remainder of the school year.
I'm with you. I just wanted to clarify.
So I, I just want to jump in too, because I had this discussion um, after school today with an elementary teacher. So um, you know, she is offering, she reminded me that she's offering instruction five days a week. Um, and so whether it be remote or in-person, that instruction is still happening. So um, there will be instruction that, you know, will occur on Wednesday in the elementary, you know, and, and Mark explained the details of the high school, middle school. But that will still happen for her students too.
Thank you, Heather. I was just going to thank the people that have been writing in. Um, give one more opportunity for anybody to write in. I think comments have come in pretty slow at this point, so I want to um, wrap up if there isn't anything else that needs to be addressed um, from the community. Go ahead.
I got a quick comment and then one question, just to clarify the nature of this proposal. Um, so I don't want to add more to your plate, but I think that we also need to go around the school and any motivational posters that say anything about breaking barriers, we need to make sure those are down, just to not encourage kids to break their barriers. And then um, the, the more, the real comment. Is it fair to say then to this proposal, one, one thing, while we, we've been talking about risk and we're adding some risk that we find, find acceptable, we're also losing a lot of flexibility. So this is a more rigid plan, doesn't have nearly as much flexibility in terms of those, those people that need to quarantine uh, and such. Um, is, is that a fair assessment of, of the plan in your opinion?
Yes, I would say that's a very fair assessment, Cory.
You know, I'll jump in with this, the, a big, a big part of this was budgeting the barriers and we're, I'm very grateful, I know you all are as well, to Colgate for that very gracious donation. Um, because that would have been just another thing to try to figure out where that money is going to come from. So thank you so much to them for that, for helping us not have to worry about that piece of the puzzle.
Chris, I'll turn it back to you.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Sure, we got a couple of questions that came in. Um, the commenter apologizes for coming in a little bit late. I think um, we, we answered these to some degree, but it might be beneficial to some to go over them again. Um, just for the principals, maybe you could give a very brief. Um, for families choosing to remain completely virtual, what does that look like for children's schedules?
So in the secondary, um, if they're continuing to stay fully remote, it would be very similar to what they're doing now when the other students are in person, but four days a week. So the, uh, right now for two days, they would be meeting with even or odd classes. And then Wednesdays would be everyone is um, virtual and doing their check-ins. If they were to stay fully remote and we transitioned to the four days, for four days a week, they'd be meeting with all of their classes, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. And then they'd be in a similar situation as everyone else on Wednesday with um, check-ins with their teacher. Or office hours with their teacher. So Mark, what would that look like screen time wise? Just as an estimate.
So students take 7.5 or seven credits, so that's seven classes, 37, so about four and a half hours.
Okay, thank you.
And then in the elementary, um, fully remote students will stay with the teacher that they have been with. Um, they will be live streaming into the courses instead of having um, asynchronous videos perhaps posted and that they could do it at differing times. And um, Wednesdays may be used to me individually with the remote students. Um, the fully remote students, you know, may be incorporated into the classes and small groups um, with other students in the class. Um, but they will be following um, the typical class schedule with the exception of lunch, recess, um, and specials.
Um, we've got one, I probably can answer this because uh, I heard Ms. Thomas answer this before. Will my kindergarteners still remain in half-day? Uh, no, those are moving to full days, right? So kindergarten will be full day. Will a middle schooler still have two days of staggered classes? No, no longer have staggered classes. And then thank you for all that you're doing. So then we got another thank you. And then another big thank you, thank you very much. This will make a huge difference for my family. I can't say how much I appreciate it.
So from here, um, I did post to make sure that anybody that still had remaining questions, um, understands that questions can still be asked. Um, but please email them directly to Bill, sorry Bill, directly to you. Um, from this point forward, um, it seems like questions had, had pretty much um, finished up. So I wanted to make sure that people that saw it late had still had the opportunity. I do um, want to get a consensus from the board. Um, it's not really a vote, but at the same time raises a hand um, or a thumbs up for um, going forward for Bill and his team to know where the board stands. And um, basically it's a stamp of approval. Um, so thumbs up or thumbs down if we could. Um, so I thank you all very much. Um, this is very important. Um, just as the rest of the year has been, um, the teachers and the staff are going to have a lot of things to change and prepare for. Um, the administrators, you guys have a lot in front of you and a lot on your plates and we're very grateful for all of you, for all of what you do. Um, and for making a difference in the lives of the children. So thank you very much. Um, if you need something, please let us know. And I think at this time, I can ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
All second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all very much and have a good evening.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So much.
Bye.